By Herb Girdon. Any, uh, any other discussion? Last month's minutes stand approved. Oh, yeah. All in favor? Thanks for that. Uh, let's take a look then at our resolutions. We only have three this month. Uh, I hope you've all had an opportunity to take a look at them. So our first resolution is resolution authorized the creation of two temporary positions in the Department of Social Services. A motion to discuss.
Motion for discussion.
Second.
Uh, motion by Legislative Drum and Legislative Girdon. Any discussion on HS one then? Stacy, any remarks, any clarifying remarks? I think the one important piece on this, uh, and again, you've all had the information in, uh, in our packages. Typically, these summaries are very, very good. So just, uh, one word I want to say about these is we know that it's a, uh, temporary positions, not part-time. We know that it's temporary. We know that it's funded, so it'll be a zero-sum issue. And when the funding, uh, is gone, the positions then will automatically be gone. So any discussion? Uh, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, HS one done. HS two, resolution transferring funds to cover Camp Hollis renovations. Um, we've got the same story here. The, uh, summary is very, very good. And again, I greatly appreciate all the directors being able to put these together and, um, answer their questions. So a motion to what, discuss?
Big one.
Motion from Krasik, second from Drum. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on the, uh, yes, Legislative Girdon?
Uh, I was just wondering, uh, the sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, uh, where does that actually come from? Cause I thought we'd already passed a motion to repair the winter rise, everything, and that shift one, now we got sixteen thousand, fifty. Where'd that come from?
Yeah, um, I'll just, I'll just give you a short piece, then we'll, um, ask the Director, uh, Brian Chetney to, uh, fill in any other pieces. But on the summary, you can take a look on the sheet, other supplies and expenses is where it's actually, um, coming from and being moved to the repairs, building and property. So in addition to, um, winter rising, there's a summary sheet there with, uh, expense line by line, lights, old carpet, ceiling fans, installation, electric. So that's a complete, uh, workup of all the work that will be done. So, um, if you could, maybe Brian, uh, expound on, on any of that, is it might feel necessary?
Okay. So with the, when COVID hit and we reduced our Hollis budget to run a day camp only, we had to project what numbers are going to be from the camp and going forward from that. So when I set down the deck and put a budget together, we estimated what the cost would be. Um, with some of the restrictions that are still in place in New York State with cancellations of events and such, then Hollis security and everything like that didn't happen. It didn't happen. We just see events were canceled. So this provided an opportunity to get a head start on some work that might need to be done as discussed in the memo there as how we could do this up. So we figured this might be the right time to at least get started being the campus. Pretty much not being used right now because of the restrictions still being in place. But it really was safety based off the projections of going into a day camp, which we've never run. It's not a camp that we were used to running. This year being different from anywhere, uh, we had guests and like expenses would be. And exactly how to tell you, uh, with this year being the way it was with, um, direction, you know, from what Bill told sometime be, you know, let's not be spending high money this year. So we kind of have a tight budget, which left some money to give up. Over.
Pretty good. Any other discussion? Thank you, Brian. Any other discussion then? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
HS two, complete. HS three, resolution approving parks and recreation camper fee scheduling. So we take a look again on the back page, shows you the, um, increases in, uh, charging fees for the numbers. And it's pretty, uh, minimal, but still they're up there. Is there movement to what, discuss?
Some move.
Got a first, second by Krasik. Any discussion on the, uh, camp fee proposals? Any discussions or questions?
Yeah, just, I just.
Yes, go ahead.
Questions. I, I know we talked about this like over and over, Brian, right? A year, was it a year, a year and a half ago, we offset some of the costs on the campers and put it on some of the larger groups that were coming in before. Is this a similar fee schedule or?
Uh, that was for the rentals.
Right.
So this being for the actual camps, we have not raised fees since summer of two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
So it's five years going into this summer. So really we're raising it five dollars.
Yep.
Um, so it, and we still have us a camp house, but, uh, with that, what we projected the numbers based on, what, two thousand and nineteen, which is when we were, the last overnight camp we ran. And Zach, a little, put a little bit more to that with this expectations. This right here, we put a big dent into the increase in minimum wage, which we're one of the only departments impacted by, uh, because of our staffing with minimum wage, which is going up seventy cents a year.
Okay. I just want to wrap my head around what you mentioned, right? This is just for.
This, this will really, for this, you're.
Okay.
You will see also with the day camp, we are proposing increase to the day camp, um, which if you do your homework, it still makes us the cheapest day camp we have, single outing. Uh, but again, just the increase alone doesn't seem to be a problem unless getting people with the interest to do so. And that will make an impact in the budget going forward.
And, and if I could just, just trying to.
Yeah, please do.
We, we work with people historically too, if they can't come to the actual.
Friends of Camp Hollis has a scholarship program.
Right.
Um, and they have a sliding fee scale for people.
Could, could you just say that comment again, please?
I would, just if I, if we work with people, so when we increase these fees, you know, if we have a shortfall of five, ten dollars for a camper, it's not, we're not turning away anybody with.
Good.
With a predicament like that.
Good. Thank you, thank you for making that comment because as, as a government entity, we're not about competing with locals. We're not about taking away their business to put people in camps, et cetera. We're about providing a service for people that might not otherwise be able to and, and be reasonable in it. And I think that's, that's exactly the right thing.
This year, we were actually able to do the day camp, um, I think I've never had it do before, uh, Friends Camp Hollis actually helped with exactly that situation. That if people were signing up for the day camp and didn't have the funding, they could apply through that, not the profit to cover, uh, the difference. So. That was good. Friends Camp Hollis, cause usually they're overnight only, but this year maybe that was different. I don't know if it's any more, but Zach had to go through some talking about, but it did work out well.
Cool.
Okay. I was, I was unaware of that. So that's another good thing, you know, we've got a not-for-profit helping out, so it's a win-win. Any other, uh, discussion? All in favor of HS three?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. That's our three. Wow. I think that was the fastest we've ever been through, uh, any human services, um, resolutions. And now for, um, reporting departments, updates from the Veterans Service Agency.
Yeah, good afternoon, everybody. I'm super quick today. We had, uh, two hundred and forty-eight contacts for the month and we filed ninety-eight claims. Uh, one of the largest appeals that I have, one came through this month and it actually was in the award of, uh, two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So that was awarded back to a veteran who had incurred a substantial overpayment due to a change in marital status. So it greatly relieved, uh, the, the burden on this veteran. So we've had a couple of other ones come in, uh, above the eighty thousand dollar range so far this month. So we definitely have someone come in with a new, uh, post process through the VA. So that's lined up for the department.
Alright. And I just want to point out then that, uh, as these claims are made, that's money that comes into the county. So it's a win-win all around where are the individual veterans who make these claims and get the money, they have, you know, they can improve their own lives. But they're also then, they're individuals that live here in the county and they're contributing to the county again. So it is a win-win for all of us. And, um, I just, I would like to add, um, Director Hamlin, I just spoke about this a little while ago. But the Veteran of the Year, we've had all the submissions are in, we've had some discussion about that. So very soon, we'll be able to put out the individual who will be our, um, Veteran of the Year. So, uh, I definitely, I don't want anyone to forget about that. We definitely have not. It's been a, it's been a pretty strenuous process, given the whole, uh, COVID issue of how do we get together on that? So very soon, we'll be able to make the announcement and we'll be able to, um, make presentations to all of those individuals who were submitted as well. And I throw that out there because things start thinking about it for next year, start thinking about it for next year. And, uh, we urge everyone to, if you see someone, see something good, say something good. You see that person, put them up, not just for Veteran of the Year, but other programs that we have. So, um, thank you, uh, Director Hamlin. So, over to you, Youth Bureau.
Great. I'll be quick. Um, a couple of things to just note that, um, our last Hollis funded, it's gonna be.
Next Monday.
Uh, next Monday. Uh, so that will be the last one we'll be able to do in twenty twenty-two, offer, um, the experience for kids to come and get Hollis on a, a day off and be able to, um, be outside, do some good activities Zach has planned. Um, we will be closing the facility for the season on November first. Um, although as I mentioned before, with the restrictions, that's kind of already in place, but Zach will be out there until then. Uh, our new AmeriCorps program kick off on November first. Our programming that we traditionally do, our leadership programs are all underway. Uh, a lot of that has changed. One new program that we had just put together, which is gaining a lot of steam, um, is called St. County Young Adventurers. And with that, we're able to do some virtual to, uh, hands-on experiences with kids and with the expectations moving forward. But we have some really neat stuff lined up, um, talking Rosemont different zoos and such today. So some really good things that kids will be able to do from their own home. And then the expectations are, um, and eventually to be able to do more of face-to-face. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention again is thank you for, um, the things that we have been working on that I know with cancer, we ensure, um, when with your needs there that the, um, they came back and they fixed the pump that halted, that we had to replace the pump that was less than a year old, still under warranty. Uh, that was done for the, the well-insept system. And Zach and I were going through a file the other day. I found the pictures of the lodge on the before and after photos. I gotta get them to you, but the file was so huge, I gotta figure out a way to get it to you because you can't even possibly email it to you, obviously. But I think it'd be a good talking point in one of your meeting students, so he could see the pictures of what it looked like and what it looks like today. So that was just a thought. Um, and as we go forward, good Zach, anything about here today as well, Parks and Rec, he does have some good expectations of what he'd like to see happen out deserving in the near future. But if you're going to lake, you gotta assume that they're gonna pull the dock out sometime this fall. So, you know, kayak and everything out there. Do it soon if you gotta pull that stuff out. But that's really just, I don't know.
Legislative Krasik.
Yeah, in Camp Hollis, they're gonna be celebrating their seventy-five years next year. And I'm on that committee and they have asked anyone in the legislative body or in the legislative government over here that if they have a comment, a line or two, something that they did at Camp Hollis or thought about it or what they think about it currently, if you would please email that to me, I will get it to Jemphify and then we'll put it in a press release. Thanks.
Is there any, um, drop dead on that? Or sooner the better on all these things, of course, but.
Yesterday would've been good.
Yeah, that's why I said.
His book is almost done and, um, he actually had to write a new chapter, a whole new chapter. So that's, that's what I'm. But thank you very much for that. I think that's all I have.
Any other, uh, Legislative Drum?
I just wanted to thank you guys. I mean, I, we're living in such a, a crazy environment right now and, um, you know, to be able to in some fashion give kids an opportunity to, to go and stretch out and run around in, in whatever form it looked like, um, uh, you know, it was hard to, so thank you for all that you guys do and for, for giving kids, you know, that form of outlet and structure and time where, um, you know, everybody's stuck inside. Um, so I, I appreciate your work. We're lucky to have Zach. I know he's doing a really good job. Um, but thank you for, for working through this. Those regulations were changing, they still are changing, you know, sometimes. And so to be able to kind of roll with the punches and to put on what you guys put on in circumstances that, you know, we've never seen in our lifetime for sure, um, is, is awesome. So thank you for, for your work.
If you wanna see crazy with yourself or the city, go to Speedway and Howland, our truck retreat is.
Yeah.
We're expecting that's gonna be just numbers that luckily the police department is gonna be out there. It would make me a little bit nervous.
Yeah. We'll see. You guys will find. But thanks again.
Uh, any, any closing comments, Rob? Very good. Thank you, Brian. Sarah Sunday, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to update you all that, um, as of today, now all my staff are in the office, working there every day. Uh, the entire office continued to work during all the disaster declaration, but, um, many of them are working from home. Uh, buildings and grounds are able to come in and add some additional plexi partitions. So now my case managers who had desks that were close together now have a partitions and they're all in the office every day. So thanks to buildings and grounds for that. And now some of some equipment, so that made it a little more functional for us and didn't have staff on top of each other. But that being said, all of our appointments are continuing to be done by the phone, um, because seniors are still one of the vulnerable populations. We don't want to encourage them to come into the office to have services. Because, um, with cleaning, we just would not be able to stand up the cleaning protocol that would be needed, that would be needed to have multiple seniors begin in. Uh, then your open enrollment opens on the fifteenth. And again, um, we're doing the phone appointments for that. We have two insurance counselors that are doing all of those appointments. And they're taking a little bit longer because it, it is a little bit harder to describe what, um, their options are, what you're doing over the phone as opposed to having something in front of you or the computer screen that you can help assist to describe, um, what that is. But they are still assisting clients normally, um, during open enrollment, probably assist between a thousand and, um, twelve hundred people. It probably will be, um, lower this year because those phone appointments are taking longer. Anyone who are not able to get a hold of, we are referring them onto Medicare to give that assistance and other, um, action agencies. The senior action council is also assisting. So, um, we are referring the calls on that we aren't able to take right now. We're not in a position to have to refer those calls on, uh, but we are, we have a plan in place if that is the case as we progress through open enrollment. We're also working, I mentioned last meeting, that we're working on the HEEP applications. Early outreach started the end of August. Um, so far, we received two hundred sixty-five applications in the office. So we are processing them on and sending them on to Social Services for approval. They don't receive any benefits until HEEP actually opens, which is the beginning of November, but the applications will be processed and that benefit will be ready for them when the HEEP does commission it open. The dining activity centers, also known as our congregate meal sites. Um, we've been, um, in pickup or grab and go meals there because of the sites themselves are not open. And as part of that, we, um, usually at the dining activity centers, we have nutrition education as well, where the registered dietitian will come in. Um, as a modification to that, they have displays that they've been working on and, you know, having, as people come to get their meals, they talk to them and give them some, some giveaways to help encourage nutrition education when they return home. We, um, I'm working with OCO because it's the winter weather now, I mean, that's, it's coming up pretty quickly upon us to try to get, um, some virtual nutrition education. So we're doing a survey of the participants to see if they have the technology at home to be able to, um, dial into a meeting, an online meeting, so that they can get that all together and get that camaraderie. That's part of what the nutrition sites are, is for the socialization. So they get that camaraderie as well as the nutrition aspect. So we're moving forward. Hopefully we'll have something in place for November, October. We're gonna continue with the onsite outside education portion of that. We are looking at, you know, as I mentioned previously, we have enough funding to cover it, but we're looking to be just shy of forty thousand meals over what we budgeted. Um, so moving into twenty twenty-one, um, that is, there, there most likely will be a waitlist for that because we have not received any word and any additional funding to be able to continue to provide meals at that level. So we're, we're working on what our criteria will be for that. Because right now, we've been told up until, um, when the, the whole pandemic started, they said anyone who's age sixty and older, if they need a meal, give them a meal. Um, so that's what we've been doing. If they have requested a meal, we've gotten a meal to them, whether it's the home delivery for the grab and go meal at the dining sites.
So Sarah.
Yes.
With that forty thousand meals over, uh, normal, what kind of percent is that? Is that double? Is it ten percent more, fifty percent more than usual?
We are, um, over about twenty percent right now, twenty to twenty-two each month. It's a little different.
Yeah.
But it's about twenty, twenty, twenty-two percent over what was last year.
Okay. Right now, so if that trend continues, you're, you're twenty percent over what you would've been last year total or last year at this point?
Well, I do a total and I do at this point and they're both about the same.
Okay. So we, probably it'll be, uh, the trend will continue. Is that?
Yes, that's what I, that's what it's looking right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And we, at the sixth month, because we started in March and September is the sixth month, we do a six-month follow-up phone call with all of the participants. We're hoping that maybe some of them would fall off and say, no, I don't need the meals any longer. Uh, that's not the case. They've all are still stating that the meals are a major source of the nutrition and they still are requesting to continue receiving the home delivery meals. So.
Okay.
We were really hoping that some people would drop off because it's easier to get into the stores now and it's easier, I mean, there's items that are on the shelf, easier to purchase goods, but that's not the case.
Go ahead, go ahead then.
I think two questions, Sarah. One, uh, first one I forgot. Um, first called funding. So, um, the funding for those meals, that's either not the funding or not the funding.
Um, for the meal programs, for our regular meals, we get both steak and federal funding. Um, for the additional meals, it's what cares at and, you know, the person wanting to is paying for the additional. As well as we're able to ship some of our unmet needs money that we have to transportation, which are not providing to the congregate sites. That is going to cover the cost of meals as well right now.
And then just a, just a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Could, um, with, uh, you mentioned criteria. So because there's no funding to continue a twenty percent increase, um, you said you're gonna set new criteria. Is that given from state or is that something that you guys would set in-house?
That, well, it's, we normally, when we're not in, uh, disaster declaration, if somebody calls or requests a meal, we do check to see if they have support, family supports that can help them out. Um, if they can go to the store, get to the store themselves to purchase food. If they're able to prepare that food once it's purchased, and there's a number of things that we look at in order to determine whether they're eligible for other meals or not. And in most cases, they are, but we have to hold people accountable. You, you know, you can prepare your own meal, you're saying you go out three or four times a week. You're not gonna be home to receive the meal, then you, you can get a meal another week by other means. Um, so we'll, we'll take that into consideration, but then, um, also when we're looking at, we'll look at age, like how old is the person? What kind of health issues they have? Um, what is their financial, um, situation? So we'll, we'll do a scale.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm looking, we'll probably have to do a waitlist if it continues on like this because, um, that's, then there's no way. I did, in my budget, I increased about, um, almost twenty thousand meals, eighteen thousand, four hundred. I increased it by, and being able to shift unmet needs money and other transportation money to cover that cost. But that's half of what we would need. If, if the trend continued on, that, that would be half of the meals we.
So, and then just my last question, because you mentioned the budget, um, so you, even with shifting some things around in your budget, you're still, that's still only half of what you're currently doing. You have the increase of what you're doing, right? So for that to continue out, to continue, you're gonna need outside funding coming, especially state or federal government funding to come in to get, uh, continue, you know.
If, if I were, right, if we're continuing at the level we are now, it would need additional funding. Um, because we're, um, the number of meals that we're anticipating to be over for this year is in two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we're able to cover that, but we won't be able to cover that this year even should be weather driven. And if there's not any additional, I haven't heard anything of any additional funding coming for aging services and then stimulus funding that's coming. Um, so I'm not, I'm not envisioning that as being part of it and it would have to come from within my budget. And that's where I took it from transportation to cover that.
Yeah, I mean, I would just say, I think, I mean, we, we would all agree. I mean, this is the way that we're, these stimulus packages and the state is going, right? I mean, but this is, uh, you know, it's tough. It's across the board, but this seems, you know, when everybody's gonna be in the house for foreseeable future, right? You know, these are the times we need to expand these types of programs. It looks like you're doing all the cannon house. Uh, but it comes back to the state and the feds stepping up and being able to say, um, you know, the political football is one thing, but when it comes to getting meals, people's hands, it should be pretty straightforward. You know, that's where it's frustrating at the local level to see, you know, it's just, uh, this inaction when it comes to simple things in my opinion. So, anyway, thanks, Sarah. That's all.
Just to, I was on the state call again for state directors and they did again say that they're not looking, the governor has not gone to the state office for the aging to look for any reductions or contingency plans. So they don't see reductions happening, which is great because we need more, not less. But, um, that each time we hear that, it makes me, you know, a little more confident that it's not gonna happen to our programs. But right now, you just really don't know.
Alright. Any other discussion? Any other discussion or questions for Sarah? Alright. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next up then is Director Allen.
ESS, saving the best for last.
That's right. Saving the easy ones, right?
Oh, yeah, great. So then those two temporary social, uh, welfare examiner positions are indeed temporary, uh, but pretty critical. Uh, this is care exam money, all federal money. Um, and the ESG will be incredibly helpful for those families, um, who have never asked for assistance from ESS. Uh, they managed to pay, uh, their rent, uh, without any government help. But COVID has put a whole new, uh, spin on their income. And with the six hundred dollar a week, uh, stimulus money gone out of unemployment, we're now with three hundred and that is not being counted towards a household's eligibility. So for those folks, after they lost that six hundred dollars a week, came back in and applied for assistance, but now are receiving the short-term three hundred dollars, which, uh, does anybody remember? Is it three months? I think they're getting it for, for three months.
I don't know. I don't know.
About right. Um, it's short-term though. Uh, we don't have to open and close and open and close. And trusting that has created, uh, tremendous, uh, pressure, um, on our financial assistance, social welfare examiners, um, closing out and then, uh, having to redetermine eligibility. Uh, that's been a, a really, uh, tough one for us. Uh, but I do want to say that, uh, that housing assistance program is really gonna hit that middle class that has, uh, lost their income. Um, the, I also just want to keep mentioning the Family First Preventive Services Act. That was an act passed by the feds last year. That kicks in next September for New York State. Um, we do need to maximize that forty federal child welfare funding. Uh, we will be issuing an RFP soon, um, to, uh, see about evidence-based programs that will be acceptable under the federal, uh, program clearinghouse they have online. Uh, they'll only fund certain programs. So, uh, over the course of this coming year, we're really gonna need to get some of our vendors, uh, up and running and as evidence-based programs. Um, you know, a little side note, I've seen a lot of programs come and go over the decades and, um, none of these have any magic wand to it. You know, it's the flavor of the day in my mind. It's all really good, solid social work practice, but they put different spins on it. And when it's evidence-based, it means it's gonna be costing us more. Maybe, uh, Maybe some of that will relax over time out of the federal legislation, I don't know, but right now it's, there's no doubt in my mind it's going to cost us more, so we've really got to maximize bringing more of that federal money in to pay for it. That means another social welfare examiner probably in that unit. I know now is not the time to ask for that, I'm not. We do have a social welfare examiner in that unit that retires in February. We're pulling in our state development coordinator to train her in preparation for February to help out with our present claiming process. The freeze has really hit us hard, but we are doing what we can to move and redeploy different people out of different divisions, different departments, different programs. We seem to have lost a lot of tightless clerks, folks at the lowest level, and they can go work for schools and pretty much any place else in a civil service arena for more money. So we've really taken a hit there. I think we're down twelve now in, just in our financial assistance unit. And as we've heard, HEAT is supposed to start, we're thinking November second. Here we are though, and the state has still not put out anything back then. When does HEAT begin and when does HEAT end, and what's the state going to do about it? I know they know their federal allocation of HEAT, but they've been slow on getting that out to us.
Stacy?
Yeah.
Here's just a quick one.
Yeah.
That won't need a huge explanation on HEAT. Does that money go to the individual or does it go directly to a provider?
It goes directly to a provider.
Very good, thank you.
Let's see, financial assistance updates, that waiver, pretty much all the waivers now are being extended right through the rest of this year. So we still don't have to do face-to-face, we still don't have to look for work, they, you know, all these different waivers that are being provided. Yeah, we have a lot of jobs, we are still requiring some face-to-faces locally, we can still do that, we don't want to accept the waiver, we're doing that on our homeless house folk, because we can't just continue to allow them month after month after month to sit in a motel room. So we are meeting with them and really pursuing permanent housing and job placement, so those two are keeping us very busy. And last, let's see, waivers and... Okay, the last thing I had, maybe this was pre-pandemic, I think, but I do recall people in the committee were interested in participating in grading or scoring proposals based on the RFPs. I've never had legislators express an interest in that. I'm not all that interested in doing it when I have to, but I think it was Tim that actually expressed interest. We had our very first RFP, Nicole Holmes, he put out an RFP for mental health, locational supports and services, and if anyone wants to participate, we start that process next week. I think we received four or five proposals. Typically those run twenty to forty pages, depending on how wordy the vendor is that's proposing, we have a very detailed score sheet. This has to do also with Medicaid transition, so we're going from a fee-for-service into this adult behavioral health homes, you might have heard about health homes and community services, so the, the BHH and CS is very complicated, but we're asking vendors who have the ability to build Medicaid through that funding stream, as well as OISE, which is ongoing integrated supportive employment, and we'd be looking at, you know, hundred thousand to a hundred and thirty-five thousand, all state federal money to run this. But if anyone wants, nobody had responded to Nicole's email, and she asked me to remind folks if you want to participate, reach out to me. This one is, I will warn you if you're interested in this, I told you those little pieces because of the Medicaid transition, because this one is a little more complicated, and you might have to kind of study up how long the transition is, which is not easy to wrap your arms around, let's put it that way. Nothing in government bureaucracy is though, right? So it should surprise you. And does anyone have any questions or particular issues?
Legislative Crassick.
Yes.
Quick comment on your last one, I couldn't do it anyways, result in conflict.
Right, right.
I do have a question on the homeless, are you aware of the situation of the gentleman that was quality in?
That was what?
At Quality Inn.
Probably not.
DSS placed him there, paid for a certain amount of rent, Arise had money for that, we paid for a month, four to six weeks to take a rent, DSS come back and took it.
Oh, is this, he's waiting placement at OPWTD?
No, this guy run up a seven thousand two hundred dollar restaurant and bar bill. And now they want their money, and they're mad at you guys, and they're mad at us, well, all we're doing is finding him housing. He's now at another hotel.
Well, when you said Quality Inn, I thought, what?
I was shocked, we're using. I think it's because of the disability, he's in a wheelchair, dah 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 dah.
Do you know this?
And we've reached back through the contact of DSS and got told, no, we've got no responsibility for that, that's you guys. And we're of course like, you know, we aren't very responsible for it, all we did was a YADA application, and we had a grant for rental assistance for homeless and did that.
I have a hard time believing DSS put him up there, but I'll look into that.
I can have Scott contact you, if you would prefer to do that.
Yeah, I, that's.
It is really a screwed up mess, and they're of course down there. They, there's no, I don't agree, I got the invoices, you don't want to come. But it's, most of it come back to, I guess he's on the list for Harborview, and Harborview run into problems getting their appliances, they put it off a month, they still didn't come, they put it off another month, then they went and did their quality testing, and my remote wasn't counting, it was state, and they put him off another four or five weeks, and I guess next week their funding will open, but because of that backlog, that's why he got placed, where he got placed. I had the same issue with, that did not make sense, his placement. The good news is, we did convince his caseworker out of DSS, he needs to have a rep AEE going forward, but that bill is going to come back and be an issue with the owners of the hotel. And I don't know how, and this homeless thing with COVID, which was all part of it, I don't know how this.
Quality Inn is not on our list of approved vendors, it's not one that we have, have you ever seen that used?
I've, I've sent a text message to my staff and asked if we've paid them either administratively or off a case, because to my knowledge, we've never used.
Yeah, I've never known to be used either, because we wouldn't for any type of.
Well, you know, we would frankly, with a number of people with the disease addiction, it's very core practice to place someone that's vulnerable in a room with a bottle.
Well, we're, we're going to push back a little bit anyway and say, wait a minute, at some point you didn't look at the bill and say, maybe we shouldn't allow him to charge his stuff to his room? I mean, you know, so, I mean, that's, that's a whole.
Well, we get a rep AEE, I think, Jim, we can begin to pay that off little by little. This is probably not someone who can afford to just pay it off, but.
Oh, absolutely. That's why we're ready.
Yeah, taking some of his spending money and saying, you already spent it there for all.
So, how did you first hear about it? It came through, what's that?
How did you first hear about it?
We were asked if we, because we got the grant, the mini-grant for rental assistance for homeless with a disability, so because he had a disability, we got the phone call that says, okay, guys, what can you do? Which by the way, Sarah, we still have money for food for people with a disability. In fact, we're shopping for a family this next week for two hundred dollars worth of groceries, so if you've got elderly in that, we can get them a gift card, but it's not going to be something you can deliver, they'd have to be able to get their own groceries, but we still have funding for that. I just want to make you aware of it because it's going to blow up.
I think, I think this is, sounds like it's definitely out of process, and between the two, you can figure out some more details, I mean, Legislative Crassick can give you whatever details.
I just want to make sure you all know.
Yeah.
We do not place people at the Quality Inn ever.
Right, this sounds like.
Somehow we got there and then we got involved, somehow we got there and then we got involved.
So, I'm sure that.
The only reason I'm bringing it up in this forum is that they're going to become real pissy very shortly, and it's going to be DSS, DSS, DSS.
I would have to say this, whatever would make them think that this agency would pay a bargain, period, I mean, I would have to think that.
Thank you, common sense would prevail there, right?
Right.
That's, that's a different argument with it, I feel, I agree.
That's, that's, that's a lot of the minutia that I'm sure Stacy, you can burrow down into and get at, because we're definitely out of process, so this is, sounds like it is not a legitimate.
No.
Action that the county will be responsible for at all, so.
You grabbed my arm on the way in, so I assumed you didn't know about this.
Did you have something else?
I did not.
Okay.
I didn't get it in, like.
Yeah, and if you could then, Stacy.
You're free, I'm all right, I'm all right.
I do, I do have, I do have presence. So a couple of legislators told me recently about having these little business cards that had the fraud hotline, if you know something, say something, and how to report fraud. So I did have these made up, and I thought I would just place them by your mailboxes. No explanations even necessary, right? People will just take what they want.
Sure.
But I think some legislators like having them in their wallet or on their desk, so that if a constituent makes a complaint to them about fraud, they can just hand them a card and say, you know, if you see something, say something. So we'll put those out at the mailbox, but that's it.
Anything else for Stacy, anything else? Yeah, Legislative Year, go ahead.
On our last caucus, a few people was bringing up about exit interviews, why people are leaving social services, and through the background, a lot of them were leaving ITOP because of the pay. And Senator Love says, we'd like to know, we know you can't use an age, but if you give someone a general idea, what's the top priority people that might be leaving? Is it to pay, which I've heard quite often, that because they could go down to Anadota and make two or three dollars more by going down there. That's what I heard, I don't know if you heard anything different.
Yeah, we have lost a few people to Anadota, one actually came back to us from Anadota, because we are a better agency and community to work with them.
Wasn't too bad, it was right there. Was as great as it ever.
That's exactly it, yeah. We are happy, Roy had actually talked with me about interest in our exit interview. Right now, it's, it's made up more of an internal document for us to use with people's quotes and all, so I am having Marty and Jeremy work on a higher level kind of summary, so that you can kind of see why are people leaving, how long have they been with us when they leave, so kind of a higher executive summary for you, and we can want to go through all those pages.
We, we have some kind of a summary of issues that are.
Yeah.
A hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah, so we are working on that, and then I typically pass those along to Roy and Brad, and they distribute, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just a little bit of bolstering, some of the comments that Stacy made, not long ago she sent out the annual report from DSS, I think you all should have gotten that, you know, good, good report to read, so you're familiar with the acronyms, you're familiar what goes on, et cetera, and then you can, you know, base questions off that. The mental health was sent out very recently, and like Stacy mentioned, she didn't get any response on that. Mental health is very complex, very expensive, very pertinent, it's necessary out there, and again, I'd urge you all to read that. And then the RFPs, that was brought up quite a while ago, when we have RFPs and we're voting on those resolutions, et cetera, we wanted some, a lot of legislators wanted some input on those, so we're offering up that point right now, if you want input on those, go ahead and get involved. I'll take it from my perspective, you all know that, probably I'll ask that question, and after I ask it, I'll go, God, you know, I feel silly, but I'd urge you all, don't feel silly about asking them, because somebody else probably has it too. So go to, go to some of these RFP things, I'd urge you to do that, and we've got the invitation out there, so it's a little better to do them upfront and learn about it and have some input there, and then too, you can ask anybody else the questions. So again, I just wanted to put those out there, because Director Albert's definitely, her door's open, she's given you the invitation, and these are complex emotional issues at times, the more that we all know, the better off we'll all be. Anything else for Director Albert? Anything for any of our directors, or anything else for the benefit of the committee? Anything at all? Any administrator, anything to add? Subtract, multiply, or divide? All right, I'll do the appropriate motion to adjourn then. Legislative Crassick and Legislative Year. Thanks very much, everyone.